Our regular clerk, Debbie Walker, is out of town. Having a really good time, I understand. And I would like to move to appoint Kent Butler as our acting clerk. So I'm going to ask council members, okay, we have a second. I'm going to ask council members to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He feels much better now. Okay, so Kent Butler will be our acting clerk. He won't actually be taking minutes of the meeting. Debbie will do that from the videotape when she gets back. But he will be filling in all of the responses on votes that people do take. So I don't have any communications. Anybody else have any communications that they need to, they would like to bring to?
I have reports, the auditor's reports.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to have the auditor's reports from February approved. Second.
All those in favor approving the, from February?
February.
The auditor's report from February. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have accepted those, that report. Thank you. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Willems?
Just a few things. We're going to have a public hearing next week for the CDBG Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Program. This will be at 7:00, 26th, next week, right here in Council Chambers before the meeting. Again, this is to, we have two public hearings for this, to be eligible for it. It usually runs about 90,000, some of which goes to fair housing, some of it goes to projects. We look at, that's what the public hearing is about, to accept some information on the projects. I'll also mention in passing that there is a town hall meeting scheduled for April 12th. This will be at the community center, and it's going to be at 6:30 to 8:30. The topic's going to be basically housing recovery for people in need. It has to do with the housing issues we have. Just a, it's for that in general. You'll hear more about it as it goes on. But as I said, that'll be April 12th, 6:30 to 8:30. Last, of course, is that we want to let you know the spring cleanup is coming, April 23rd, which is later in the next month. We may as well start talking to you about it sooner than later. And that goes from 23rd to 27th. I'm sure you all know about it. And that will culminate, of course, in the publication day on the 28th. And I think that's all I really have.
Any questions for the mayor?
Mr. Mayor, do you know, can you tell us when, or do you know when the second public hearing is? When that's scheduled?
No, we haven't scheduled it yet. Probably late, I really don't know. I don't think we have to put the application until like July or August, so I think we have some time. We'll have it scheduled by the first time, your first.
Okay.
Auditor Heck, anything else?
I just wanted to let council know that we've started our audit process. We actually started about a month ago, but last week we had our entrance conference with our actual auditors, except for a fifth year with the IPA that we have now. About a month before that, we work with our accountants who prepare our financial statements for the audit for us. So they will be coming in amid April, and our audit is due to the state by the end of June. Very rarely does it ever end up getting in there much before then, no matter how hard we try. We're all prepared and have everything out there, but it will be in by the due date. I think everyone has completed their conflict of interest forms and turned those back into us. And that will probably be mostly council's needed action unless any issues come up. That's it.
Just as inside the auditor's office has been stellar audits in the past several years. Law Director, Patrick Knight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would only just note briefly that the city did get a court ruling today. Some may have seen that the three wide, in the three wide case, the plaintiffs had filed for a motion to compel, asking the court to basically order the city to issue a use permit and to give them sanctions. And the court today denied that motion and said that the city has complied and is complying with the initial court order. So, good ruling.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 3212, in ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.0.21, Right Turns Prohibited. Introduced by all council members. Who would like to speak to this for third reading?
I've been speaking to it. I suggest that we proceed to adopt ordinance 3212.
Your second?
Second. This is kind of a cleaning up amendment, so that right now the chapter 704 to 1 has several streets listed. Sometimes right turns should be prohibited for other reasons. And so instead of having to go through an ordinance procedure to prohibit those right turns, this will be between the service safety director and the streets director to prohibit those rights, right turns.
With signs.
With signs. Now, we're not going to just put it up. You can't do it, and then you'll go in, so. So it's kind of making it more logical.
Which is always.
Always good.
Always good. Okay, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 3212, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is, I accept it then. Ordinance 3312, ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 43 Wireless Telecommunications Facilities. Introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 3312.
Second.
3312 has been an ordinance long in development by our planning planner and our planning commission. Basically, it establishes rules and regulations for wireless telecommunications towers. And it's very, I think, progressive when compared to other facilities in Ohio, and it serves the city of Ohio well.
Mayor Willems?
Point out, this is a whole new chapter in our code, Title 43. I have to thank the planner, Paul Lo, for doing all the long share of it. Realize that this was actually suggested in the comprehensive plan in 2005. So it's been a long time coming, but here we are. Just so you know.
The planner gave an excellent presentation to council and the television audience about this for a while ago.
I think that it's a good, it's a good point to point out that it was in the comprehensive plan, and we've been, you know, it's not, comprehensive plans aren't just made and then put on the shelf. We've been working on several things that were suggested in the comprehensive plan, and we've been bringing them forward for the last few years. So this is just another one of them.
And therefore, all those in favor of ordinance 3312?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ordinance for, one ordinance for second reading. Ordinance 4112, ordinance authorizing the adoption of an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the City of Athens Police, Lieutenants, and Communications Officers concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley, I guess.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second. Okay.
The reason being that we need to process this in a timely fashion, since this is an agreement that became effective, or will become effective, back to December 4th, 2011.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of accepting ordinance 4112, signify by saying aye.
Under suspension.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do that every time. That vote was about the suspension only. Now we have to pass the ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 4112.
Second.
And this is, an ordinance is described in the title. What it is, is a three-year contract for the patrol officers, communication officers, and lieutenants. And just once again, thanking everybody who worked on this, including Law Director Lang, our resource director Claudia Reagan, Service Safety Director Heranne Mosley, and also the representatives from the Fraternal Order of Police. We thank you. It does take care of the wages and also benefits and certain other benefits that are provided to the police officers for the next three years. There have been some upgrades to that. It also takes into, or will put into effect, 3% wage increase in year one, 2.5% in year two, and then 2% in year five, for a total of 7.5% over the three years. And as stated, we do need to suspend this tonight because the, it becomes effective, as soon as this ordinance is passed, the wages will become effective as of December 4th, and we need to take care of this as a city obligation.
And so now, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 4112, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're accepting ordinance 4112, the agreement with the police. Okay, now we have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 4212, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 2012 through 13 with the Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. This simply is a program that has been in operation for 24 years here in Athens, and allows, this particular ordinance allows the mayor to work on the application and enter into the agreement. Thank you.
Mayor, did you want to add something?
It's been going on for many years, I think 18 years, I believe. If my memory is correct. We have a good officer who pays for part of his salary, I believe. We have sponsors, corporate sponsors who help out as well. All in all, it's, it's got a, probably a lot, I give to Rick Crosson, who does a good job of it, but I think it's a well-working program at this point.
This is the mayor program that's in our local school system.
Correct. That's 24 years in the Athens School District, and Officer Crosson has been involved for 18 years.
He's not Officer Crosson, he's Officer Rick.
There you go.
He's Officer Rick, yes.
And he is out there, and everybody knows him. He does a great job. Awesome.
Having attended the graduations quite regularly, I'm impressed by how the kids really look up to him and how he interacts with them. He's emphasized the responsibility of choices, and I think that's a good emphasis to have. And again, it's basically sixth graders who are going into, from elementary to middle school. He also touched base with third graders. I think the older ones, eighth grades, if my memory is correct. But I only see the graduations I go to, who just ignore me, because I'm just the mayor. But Officer Rick is there.
Officer Rick.
Officer Rick.
Just not Rick. I hear about him all the time, my kids just went through it.
Okay.
It's very popular.
Ordinance 4312, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids for construction and construction engineering of the 2012 Water System Improvements Project 264 and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this at length during our committee meeting last week. This project would entail replacement of, I believe, a total of over 8,000 feet of old cast iron 1950s-era water lines within the city. Vastly improve a number of neighborhoods and increase the water flow ability, as well as the inclusion of 17 new total fire hydrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 4412, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Introduced by Councilmember Gausen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Periodically, the city comes into possession of vehicles. These are through the police department, either seizures due to legal issues, I would assume all of them, actually. We have six that the city needs to get rid of. 96 Chevy Cavalier, a 1994 Toyota Camry, 1988 Dodge Ram, 1987 Chevy S10, 2004 Nissan Frontier, and a 97 Saab 900. And so this is giving permission to dispose of these vehicles, either by donations to government agencies or nonprofits, which we do periodically with certain vehicles, or to auction these off, or get rid of them through scrap if they have no value as operational vehicle.
Moving on to ordinance 4512, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a Community Development Block Grant for calendar year 2013, federal fiscal year 2012. Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a grant that entitles communities, community grantees, to carry out a wide range of community development activities, such as revitalizing neighborhoods, community development, providing improvement to community facilities and services. The city of Athens has received these in the past, a number of them that have gone towards a lot of city improvements, improving the upper stairs between Fairview and Fort, replacing or improving some of the lighting on Court Street, some of the Mill Street repairs, the Grosvenor Slip. Some of the funds from that came from the Community Development Block Grant. Oh, and one last thing, again, to kind of reiterate what the mayor said earlier, there is, this does have two public hearings. The first one will be next Monday at 7:00, May 26th. Oh, March 26th.
March. Ordinance 46, ordinance 4612, okay. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Buckeye Hills-Hawking Valley Regional Development District to administer the city's CDBG revolving loan fund. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As stated in the title, what we're going to be authorizing the mayor to do is to begin working with Buckeye Hills-Hawking Valley Regional Development District to help us administer our revolving loan fund, which is an amount of money that has been made available to the city, and we use that to encourage economic development and businesses in our community. Buckeye Hills has a good record with administering funds. It's also the agency with whom the Athens County Commissioners are going to be working with their revolving loan fund as well. So we think it's a good, solid partnership to be working towards.
Ordinance 4712, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to expend funds for engineering and right-of-way services associated with the safe routes to school, with the safe routes to school, sidewalk improvements and bike path connector, Project 262, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asked that we consider 4712 under suspension.
Second.
And the purpose of the suspension is to be able to move forward in a timely fashion with the engineering for this project.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The rules are suspended. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 4712.
Second.
And this is for our safe routes to school, and in particular, this is for the engineering portion of it, for sidewalks and sidewalk improvements, and also a bike path connector. And this year, we will be improving certain sections of sidewalk, I believe on Shannon.
Yeah, parts of Shannon, I think part of Miller.
Miller, okay.
Yeah, Miller by Arch West, I think is in the chute, and then of course, the bike path going from Morris to the bike path itself, I believe.
So this will be a great, great improvement. And one that Councilmember Fall has highlighted before, it's very much a collaborative project where the city works with the schools and has a long-term, long-range plan, and that's how we proceed working with these different projects each year.
Okay. To follow up on that, I think that this is one of the best federal programs that Athens has plugged into. I hope that the reauthorization of the Transportation Act includes it. There's some if, so.
Yes.
And for my neighborhood, this has been a priority, and I really appreciate that this is going forward by the city administration and the city council. The Morris Avenue Bike Path Connector has been wanted for a gazillion people for a long time, so.
Thanks a lot.
There is a lot of people. They love that area.
Member Butler.
Thank you. I might echo as well, too. There's been some nice improvements near the school system on the west side as well, including new steps leading to the elementary school, which again, is phenomenal and really beneficial for the neighborhood. So I too echo what's been stated. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 4712, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance 4712 is accepted under suspension of the rules. On to ordinance 4812, an ordinance amending the 2012 part-time and seasonal staffing levels authorized by ordinance 12611 and amended by ordinance 4012. Introduced by Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we consider 4812 under suspension.
Second.
And the reason for this is that we do, this is part-time seasonal staffing for the auxiliary police, and these are for events that happen in the spring sometimes, and sometimes in the fall, but we have spring approaching and will probably need auxiliary police.
Good.
Just a question. We talked about this in committee last week, but there will be an increased cost to the city. Do we know what that will be, the way we're handling it this year versus previous year?
We can't pin that down exactly, because this represents a difference in the way we pay them, which we talked about this. As a contract employee, we can say, we're paying you $175 per shift and leave it at that. However, now we are paying them under a staffing ordinance, so they will be covered by workers' comp. How much we actually pay them so that they can get that base amount of $175 will vary depending on how they fill their W-4 out, how many deductions they put on there. And so we will adjust what we pay them accordingly, because we'll have to, as an employee, we withhold all city taxes, federal, state, workers' comp, unemployment comp, and, yeah, and pers.
So do we know roughly what the increase would be? Will it be twice as much, 50% increase?
I'm going to say at least 50, probably more like $75 a person.
So times the number of additional staff, times the, times the each event. But I might add, you know, considering that it's for the safety of the city and the safety of the auxiliary police that we're hiring, I think it's something that, you know, in regards to human resources and paying workers' comp, I think.
Right. The other issue is if someone were seriously hurt, then we would probably be liable, and it would cost us probably more than what we're going to pay them extra to make sure they're all covered by our workers' comp program.
Mayor Willems?
No, that's, can't be covered at all.
Okay, this is asking for suspension of the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of 4812.
Second.
Second.
And as we had discussed at committee meeting, this is for auxiliary staff, for the police, for the major events that occur periodically during the city, and we need additional coverage. And what this does would be providing workers' comp for those auxiliary police that are hired. They would be considered part-time employees.
All those in favor of accepting ordinance 4812, signify by saying aye.
We have questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
That's okay. Not so much a question, as again, to echo what Member Nysley was saying about how important this is from a safety standpoint, in lieu of the cost increase that there may be, that we may incur from this. I think safety pretty much trumps the nominal increase that we're going to see with this.
Now, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 4812, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, ordinance 4812 is adopted. Ordinance 4912, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance 4912 is a transfer of some monies, and this would be for our CDBG fund that is taking care of the Grosvenor Slip this year, and a portion of it, we need to be transferring from the supplies line over to the administrative line for administrative costs incurred by the city for this project. And the amount is $19,400.
I would just like to make a comment. This has been a long time coming.
All the glad.
This is a Grosvenor Street project, and I can't see it happening fast enough. And I know the people in the third ward will really appreciate this. It's been, it's been quite an issue over the years.
Ordinance 5012, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of, purchase of telemetry software and radios for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something, again, we discussed during committee meeting. This will be an upgrade to our telemetry system software, along with the purchase of some telemetry radios that will work towards the 2013 FCC narrowbanding requirements. This will be the, authorize the city service safety director to expend up to about $42,000 for these improvements. Thank you.
Questions? So we're moving on. Announcements and other business. Announcements usually includes committees that might want to.
Please.
Planning and development.
Let's add transportation as well.
Transportation.
And finance and personnel.
Finance and personnel.
There's never a day without them.
Okay, so right now, we have three committees meeting for next week.
I might add to, please let the clerk know, so I can get you guys down on the.
You mean what topics?
Yeah, I wrote it down.
I wrote it down. Let me know. I'll send out an email.
We're having an acting up clerk. Do we have other business to come before council? Now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on our agenda. If you do, there, please remember that we, the clerk needs names and addresses, so there's a, there's a pad up there, we hope.
We hope. And I will likely do.
If not, we'll find something for you. Please sign in, and your three minutes won't start until you're done with that.
Is there a pad up there? Great.
Then once you've done that, please introduce yourself and give us your address. Thank you.
Just wanted to thank the people who worked on the telecommunications ordinance. Some years ago, I brought this to the attention of city council. Some years ago, I brought this to the attention of city council in and around the time that the comprehensive plan was being assembled. Though I didn't serve on the comprehensive plan committee directly, I have a background in military and amateur telecommunications. I would want, I wanted to make a point. Back in, back then, the word out was, oh, you can't do that. I would, I'm putting this in context of other so-called adjustments to city, to city legislations that are on the books at present, or even on state books, that I just want to say, nothing is set in stone. So remember, you know, there is a process, there are ways to go about it, there's research that needs to be done, that gets to be done, and when finally it congeals, you end up with a product of something that didn't exist before. So we might consider that in, when we come to a couple of things like hydraulic fracturing, why do we have a substance in our drinking water that's not even a pharmaceutical? You know, you have to ask those questions. And there's nothing set in stone. So I just want to put that in that context, because there was a time when, oh, you can't do anything about that. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to council tonight?
Open the door, it's an alarm on it. It'll set a heart attack.
No? Then we will adjourn.
Everybody has.
Thank you.